Wave that competitive bidding process.
Plus we have the weather consideration, and we've got a window of opportunity here. Don't want to be doing that in the winter.
My feeling too is if you everybody remembers last 4th of July, we had a hurricane down in the Gulf that came up into the Ozarks.
We don't want it but to rain.
And if we had, in the hurricane season, Florida or lower part of Florida, Alabama, Georgia, they had 13 inches of rain the other day in a 24-hour period. So if anything like that happened to us, we might have a problem, we would have a problem, a serious problem. Thanks.
Well, the other thing that we're up against too is the availability of contractors. I do know one of the other contractors that has the potential to do this job is paying some pretty hefty fines right now because he's not able to complete some large projects in the area of the Joplin tornado too. You have that problem of availability of contractors that even wouldn't want to bid on it in the first place. So, you know, good for the building trades locally, but it might be tough to find a, you know, in this area, the other one I know of, he's paying fines right now for not being able to finish his job. So it makes it doubly difficult if we decide to go out for bids.
Yeah, especially at this point, you know, it's just the amount, we're not talking about, you know, the smaller ones.
Are we getting the cart before the horse or the discussion? We haven't even decided whether we're going to sign an ordinance. Are we going to continue full discussion and then?
Either way, will you make a motion to sign a number?
Well, since we've already had the discussion, my concern is that this has been going on for, if I remember correctly, at least over six weeks, if I'm not mistaken. A comment was made when we stood at the top of Spring Street that we were probably going to have to worry about, and I'm not disputing anything that the engineers are saying from the technical side of it, I'm giving a purchasing, contracting concern from the city standpoint of our money. And also in the proposed ordinance, we were saying that Public Works directors research the cost and availability of firms, but we sure don't have anything in front of us that justifies that it, you know, might be $150,000 to move somebody else in here, get the learning curve taken care of. And one thing that hasn't been mentioned that came up in the site visit is how much of this proposed $77,000 in work can we, and I would defer part of this to the city attorney. It's my understanding that from the top of Spring Street down to Grand Street, other than the water line right away, is that correct terminology, Duane? That that, all that work is being done on private property, not city property. I realize we're doing it to protect two city roads, however, I don't know if that's all...
The majority of the work within the right away, you know, there's three streets involved, but, you know, to completely stabilize it, we approach from spring and there will be some approach from grand on the private property, yes.
And I, you know, I got a lengthy email the last time we approved a no-bid ordinance for this work, and I just want to make certain that Public Works has done their due diligence to make sure that we've got some backing that can justify us making a decision at this table of not bidding this, that they can show that remobilizing another contractor, learning curve, whatever the case might be, as Mr. Perkypal said, the rock is basically a freebie, but, you know, there's no such thing as a free lunch either, that we're covered. You know, I have no problem with the contractor that's in there doing it with what needs to be done, how it's being done. It's just that it would have been nice if we'd have been able to sit down during this six-week period and said, "Well, it looks like it's going to cost us this," based on talking to the contractor that's in there, "and it's going to cost us this if we try bringing in a new one." And I just feel very uncomfortable with a non-competitive ordinance that has our name assigned to it whenever we've been sitting here for six weeks. First time we had a couple days, but this time we've been waiting around a lot.
James?
To the item of public property, some people may not understand, there is a third street that bisects that right in the middle of it. So you're talking about Spring Street, Grand Street, and Grand Avenue, is it Grand Boulevard?
Spring Garden.
Spring Garden is the third street that runs right through the middle of it. So we have three streets at play, three city streets at play. They're all tied to one factor, and that is that the hillside is sliding down. So, you know, I don't see any way possible that we could not be looking out for the city's best interest in doing this work. We're not going to, well, maybe we will, I don't know, because even dressing this land with seeding and vegetation would be to the benefit of the city. So, you know, we're looking out for the best interests of the city. I'm sure the property owner wishes they had those trees back caused by, you know, our Grotto Spring. So the property owner is going to incur substantial damage to their property. So net gain, they're not getting anything out of this. They've actually lost a canopy, they've lost all their topsoil. So, you know, we're looking out for our best interest, and that's three city streets here. And I just feel that it is the nature of what we're dealing with.
And the water.
And that also.
Yeah, we originally took, you know, in the midst of that emergency, we took bids on the rock, you know, so we took bids at that point. So we know that we're getting the rock at the cheapest possible price, but like you said, we don't have set figures on, you know, what would a contractor say, "I would place that rock," you know, but we know the hauling costs associated with getting that rock there. And that could be, some of that could be twofold. Like you said, the price he was, he was mentioning, it's not, it's not free with the price that he took, and when you put it to the other people hauling it, that's what makes it look that way, so. They could sell you that rock for that if you would come and get it, but we don't have the capacity to do it, so we have to have it moved in, so that's... We know we could, we could be looking at a higher cost and a limestone coming back in, for sure. But the original plan was, like you said, we were going to get to that point, we were going to stop, and we were going to bid the lower end, but we didn't realize that we would get into this situation. And we thought we were going to try to put like a two-to-one slope there, and that would solve it, and it hadn't, so, you know, that's where we're at.
And that just came up in the last week or two?
Yeah, yeah, we dug in the last couple of weeks down here, once we started pulling the soil off of the two-to-one, it just, we stopped because the whole thing was going to solve. So, you know, it needs to, before that trail's pulled out, the rock needs to go back in immediately behind it, so. It's, you know, it's important, you know, I mean, the fear of, we've got it open, it's kind of our bypass there, but if it gets any kind of a large rainfall, we'll have to close that off, because, you know, that's the fear, it will come back out, could hit a vehicle or whatever, so. But that's, you know, if we wait that amount of time, then we probably will close the, you know, we'd have to close the Grand Street off again completely, so. But that's, that's kind of the, you know, you call it emergency or you don't, so.
Mr. DeVito?
I'd move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second. Discussion?
It's to be 2141.
We have a motion and a second to give this a number and put it on first reading. All those in favor, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
How about I? The number is, what'd you say?
2141.
2141.
Who was the note?
Excuse me? I was.
And Lanny voted basically no.
211.
So it comes to be 411.
211.
2141.
Ordinance number 2141, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the stabilization work regarding support and repair of Grand Avenue and declaring an emergency. Whereas due to recent natural weather-related occurrences, the earth-supporting Spring Street and overlaying Grand Avenue has begun to move, causing each street to become unsafe for use and... Whereas these are well-traveled streets within the city of Eureka Springs to the efficient flow of traffic, including emergency vehicles, and whereas the Public Works Director has researched the cost and availability of firms capable of making the emergency repairs needed to prevent further damage and fully reopen traffic flow on Grand Avenue. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of Eureka Springs does hereby waive the competitive bidding requirements, the Arkansas Code annotated, and the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to allow for contracting by the City of Eureka Springs with Johnson Landscaping and or Ozark Stone in an amount of up to $77,000 for stabilization and repair. Section 2, that the Finance Directors hereby authorize to transfer said necessary sums from the Street Reserve Fund to cover said expenses. And the emergency clause is ready. Now, lay it.
I would move to approve ordinance number 2141 on its first reading.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Same.
Aye. Mr. DeVito?
I'd like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2141 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. Poundoff?
No.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Four yeses, two noes.
Yes.
Four yeses, two noes. An ordinance, ordinance number 2141, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the stabilization work regarding support and repair of Grand Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. DeVito?
I would move to approve ordinance number 2141 on its second reading.
Second.
Parker, was that a yes?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to read ordinance, put ordinance 2141, approve ordinance 2141 on the second reading. All those in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Aye. Ms. Balance and Mr. Poundoff.
So 42.
Mr. DeVito?
I would like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2141 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Is this one roll call?
Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Poundoff?
No.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick? Dr. Kirkpatrick?
One more, give me that one more time.
To read it the third time by title only. Three yeses, two noes?
Yes.
Four yeses, two noes. Ordinance number 2141, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the stabilization work regarding support and repair of Grand Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. DeVito?
I'd like to approve ordinance number 2141 on its third reading.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
2142.
Now the emergency clause?
Do you need a motion, move to read the emergency clause?
Yes, sir. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and second to read the emergency clause.
Okay. Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. Poundoff?
No.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Same, okay. 42 with you. Emergency clause, Section 3, that due to the immediate need to deal with fully reopening Grand Avenue to both emergency and non-emergency traffic within the city, for the health and safety of the citizens of the city, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage by the Eureka Springs City Council and signing by the Eureka Springs Mayor.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
All right, what's our agenda here? All right, we're back on the second reading of the domestic file ordinance.
I would move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2139 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call run.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. Poundoff?
Yes.
Five zero. Ordinance 2139, an ordinance regulating the keeping of domestic foul within the corporate limits of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and amending chapters of Title 6 and the Municipal Code of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, regarding keeping of domestic foul.
Mr. DeVito?
I'd move to approve ordinance number 2139 on its second reading.
Second.
Good motion made and seconded to approve it on the second reading. All those in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proposed ordinance for backflow preventer, backflow valve, I guess. Motion for discussion?
Move to discuss.
I was downloading the copy, and my printer went berserk, and I have just a little squishy line across the sheet.
Okay, we got a motion to discuss, did I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Raphael?
Second.
Open for discussion? Mr. Raphael?
Yeah, so I looked into this quite a bit, talked to Duane and some guys that operate the sewer routers, and it seems like this has come about because of the Clark situation. And that happens in every town, you know, it wasn't handled that well, but, you know, usually if people have moved out, the houses remediate. You know, I had, my printer went down, otherwise I'd have some pretty cool pictures of non-functioning checkbells and pop-off valves. But it seems, you know, I was asking him, I said, "What do you think in a city like this, how many, how many situations do we have like that?" And I said, "Do you think 50?" And, "Oh, no, no, not, 25?" "Hmm, that's a little high." You know, so we got 15 to 20 situations, they're probably old lines, put in incorrectly. I'm not sure there's a need to do anything except direct Duane to make a list of the situations that need to be addressed and figure out which way to fix them, they need to be fixed.
Any other comments?
Well, I'm going to defer with the technical knowledge to our new colleague, but one of my concerns is that we have installed a $450,000-plus sewer system on the west side of town, back where there could possibly be new construction going on. And we still don't have probably three or four houses hooked up to that. I don't know if necessarily putting these pop-off valves, which I remember our former building official, I think this was Mr. Barry, you might remember a little better than I back in the previous couple administrations ago, standing up with a $25 valve from local plumbing company and saying, "This is all that is entailed." And we've gotten input from a planning commissioner who's also a contractor-developer, saying that that necessarily isn't the total fix. I'd like to just see, you know, as Mr. Raphael proposed, that Public Works looking at really giving us a down-and-dirty list of what areas within the town do we possibly have potential problems like that, and maybe a guideline that we can go out whenever Public Works goes out, talk to somebody who's doing it, call and say, "I've got a sewer problem," that understands their liability along with the city liability, so we don't have another potential Miss Clark situation. And as I remember quite distinctly from Mr. Van Tongen's talks with planning commission, it's hard writing a new ordinance for an old town, and I don't know if this is one that's going to necessarily fix our problem.
I don't think it fixes our problem at all. You know, I talked to Duane, and I suggested, and he agreed that maybe when you come into these situations like that, maybe, you know, go back to the manual snake, you know, don't take any chances. Until, until the line is installed, I'm sure, I'm new, I mean, this was written up, the way I see it, this is new and repaired jobs. New and repaired jobs, surely we have better codes now, and they're going to put the sewer lines in properly. The problem is the sewer lines are not put in properly. We can either fix them, or we can, you know, put a band-aid on them, but all of these, the checkbells, the pop-off valves, they all fail. Pop-up ones are a cheap little plastic thing, they get run over all the time, you know, and when they release, I have had pictures of them with toilet paper and stuff coming out, out the top. Then it's, then the valve won't close, then you have gurgling in your toilet. The checkbell gets hair, string and stuff in it, then it won't open, you've got backflow, or it stays open and it doesn't work anymore. Want to fix the problem.
Mr. DeVito?
Well, I'm sure there's people in the community that think what comes out, council probably does need a pop-off valve on it, but I don't feel that this is something that councils should even be bothering with. This is something that should be in Public Works, this should be a matter of policy, so I don't feel it's something that we should be passing ordinances regarding, I mean, you go through the municipal, you go through the plumbing code, I mean, there's no city ordinances in there. I mean, why are we suddenly find ourselves necessary to have an ordinance for a pop-off valve? I just don't feel it's appropriate for us.
I was just going to mention that, if I understand correctly, these pop-off valves are Schedule 40 plastic, they're rated about 200 pounds per square inch fluid pressure. The jet trucks, if I understand correctly, run anywhere from 1,000 to 5,000 pounds per square inch. I could be incorrect, y'all can correct me after I've got it.
I could do that.
If, I've been told by people who should know that if backflow valves are installed on gravity lines, debris can hang up on them, and then the lines can't be snaked, because once you stick that snake down in them, you can't pull it back out without causing damage to the equipment or the valve, so those are what I want to do.
Sounds to me like general consensus of the council to take this off the table.
I tend to agree, surprise, surprise with Mr. DeVito, that we're looking at writing an ordinance that's going to supersede the Arkansas Plumbing Code, and I think that's going to get us in trouble right there. I would recommend we take this from the table and request that Public Works write some kind of proper procedure for notification of issues like what happened with Miss Clark.
Second.
Okay, I guess that was a motion, you want to...
Take it off the table and instruct Public Works to deal with it.
Okay. Mr. Raphael, if you have a...
No, that's fine.
Any further comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor, signify the saying aye?
Please repeat.
To take it off the table and have Public Works come up with, uh, James, excuse me, Mr. DeVito?
All those in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Raphael, turn your sound over if you want.
Third item, Deerhouse.
Question to discuss Deerhouse?
Second.
I would like to suggest, after listening to Ms. Snyder, and I had some other questions too, that we defer this at least until our next meeting to get some more information.
Move that we defer this to the first meeting in August.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, discussion of Municipal Code 2.36.04, Operation Manual for the Finance Department.
Move to discuss.
Second.
All those in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I do appreciate that this is, has been established, because I think it's a very important thing for the Finance Department to have.
Go down to the next paragraph, "Payments for other check requests include travel reimbursements." It might be, might, should be, "Including travel reimbursements, et cetera." Okay, we go to the next page, page three, we see, "All purchases should be on purchase order or approved credit card. Following items are exempt from purchase orders regardless of amount. Advertising insurance for new legal and on fees, legal settlement, internal charges, utilities, certain construction projects." I think certain construction projects needs to be specified. What kind of construction projects, what, what exactly, I don't think it should be just certain construction projects, I should think it should be specified which construction projects. Okay. When we go to page four, under social security, we see, "Social security coverage is extended to all city employees, including full-time, but excluding full-time fire EMS employees who are covered by lot fee." How about the police? Are the police not also covered by lot fee? And if so, maybe they need to be added into this. I don't understand all that, so I would be welcome somebody to explain that to me, but that was a concern I had. We go to page five, under garnishments. Number two, "Up to 50% of an employee's disposal income." That should probably be disposable. Number one says, "Garnishments are applied to the wages earned in the pay period during which garnishment summonses are served." Wouldn't it also be applied to the wages earned at the time after the garnishment summons are served? I mean, it should probably be more than just that one pay period during which the garnishment summonses are served, or maybe I just misunderstand. Okay. We go to notice of levy, internal revenue service. Last sentence says, "The notice of levy is a continuous levy and is applicable to the net wages or a portion of them available for the pay period in which it was received." If it's continuous levy and it's applicable to the net wages or a portion of them available, should it be only for the pay period in which it was received or should it be for however long the notice of levy lasts? Okay. We go to page six, at the bottom, the very last paragraph, it says petty cash. Cash on hand available. The next sentence says, "In the event an authorized petty cash fund has been divided and is located in more than one office, there must be a memorandum available authorizing and reflecting the distribution of petty cash in the two locations." Well, now, more than one office could be more than two locations, so that probably needs to be clarified as well. I mean, it could be three or four or however many. Okay. We go to page seven, and it's full of deposits should be, departments should maintain, should be supported, the report should be, should be, maybe those should be changed to shall, because shall is like, you will, should is like, yeah, you can do it if you want to. So, I wonder about that. So we go down here under external audits, and the third paragraph says, "In addition to the..." Comma, Arkansas Division of Legislature Audit External Audits, that's really good. Okay, "In addition to the..." What?
The comma's in the wrong place.
Well, it says here, "In addition to the..."
Arkansas Division of Legislative Audit, comma.
Exter, okay, comma, very good, thank you. So the comma, that comma, the first, "In addition to the..." That comma should go away.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And then the next, the comma should be after audit.
Correct.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, that's my comments on this document for now, so I would, unless anybody else has something else they would like to add?
Mr. Pownal?
It's back to what we discussed last meeting, even for item five, and I appreciate the diligence of Ms. Balance, but I'd really like to see this in front of the new Finance Director and have them give us their take. I make a motion that we defer this to the new Finance Director to present this back at the next meeting, the first meeting in August.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of deferring this to, to our next meeting?
First meeting, I guess.
To the next meeting?
That will be the first meeting in August.
August the fourth.
Fourth, okay. And that time also gives, and to have the new Finance Director do it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Somebody?
I've got about a seven minute.
Big question?
Seven minute break.
I'd like, I'll second that, I'd like to amend it to, a seven minute break and need the cameras rolling.
Quite a sound here. Has he sat in here waiting for us to give him money, or why is he here? He's just here?
Discussion is waiting for number eight.
All right, we got a motion and a second.
amended motion.
Amended motion to leave the camera running?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we need the cameras rolling.
Pardon?
I have to do stuff with finalizing the disc and taking stuff out of there, I have technical stuff I have to do with the camera if we take a break.
Okay, then I'll throw out my amendment.
Can I have a motion to adjourn for seven minutes? All those in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. DeVito, what's your vote?